You guys, you guys are all good?
Yeah.
I'd like to call to order the Miami'sburg City School District Board Meeting for Thursday, September 15th, 2022. Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Espy, can we have a roll call?
Mr. Amsler?
Here.
Mr. Daffler?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mrs. Neese?
Here.
Mr. Toadvine?
Present.
Dr. Blessing?
Present.
I am present, and Mr. Homan?
Here.
Next on tonight's agenda is the adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion for tonight's adoption of the agenda?
I'll move for the adoption of the agenda, September 15th, 2022.
Second. Motion by Mr. Lewis, seconded by Mr. Toadvine. Any questions or comments in regards to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, may I have a roll call?
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Next is approval of minutes. Approval of the minutes for the regular board meeting held on August 18th, 2022, and the special board meeting work session held on August 30th, 2022. May I have a motion for those two meetings as well?
I move for the approval of the minutes for the regular board meeting held on August 18th, 2022, and the special meeting work session held on August 30th, 2022.
Motion by Mr. Toadvine?
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Daffler. Any questions in regards to those two meetings? Hearing none, may I have a roll call?
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Next is approval of the financial report, August 31st, 2022. May I have a motion for the financial report for August 34th, 2022?
I move for the approval of the financial report dated August 31st, 2022.
Motion by Mr. Daffler, and I believe, before I cut her off, seconded by Mrs. Neese. Mr. Espy?
Yeah, I just want to highlight some things that are on the dashboard report, which is the first report you see within the packet. We are currently tracking our revenues to indicate a 354,000 swing for the positive in terms of revenues to what I forecasted in May. That's a difference of 0.6 percent. We're also indicating expenditures to be about $100,000 lower, and that's a 0.1 percent swing. So, for a difference of 454,000, the estimated cash balance is about 454,000 higher than is budgeted because of those two swings that I just talked about. Did want to talk about that there is a deficit, however, when you look at the cash balance from, or the effect on what the cash balance will be when we look at the future of this fiscal year. So, that's indicated there in the light blue section of the negative 415,000. As we dig into that a little bit more, I wanted to kind of highlight what the main changes are. When we look at the second page with the revenue analysis, there really wellness funds are now coming into the general fund, whereas they weren't last year, or at least they weren't at the beginning of last year. We didn't actually get the new funding formula in place until well into 2022 calendar year. So, now that the wellness funds are actually coming in, that's going to be what that swing is. We look at the actual revenue received now versus last year as well. We were still being essentially funded on fiscal year 19 amounts because the fair school funding plan wasn't in place yet. And then we look at the swing that we have in the all other revenue category. That's what falls into that category is full day kindergarten tuition as well as revenue in lieu of taxes. So, as you know, we've had a couple revenue in lieu of taxes that came in this fiscal year that were tied to the House bill that has now eliminated that. So, finally, I want to point out on page three, when we look at state revenue and how it's actually down 336,000, that's really due to our enrollment. I know we talked about that at our last work session, but you know, with us being down a little bit enrollment from where we ended last year, obviously that is going to impact the forecast and how it goes forward. So, each kid or each student that we have here in Miami'sburg, we essentially get funded around 700, or $7,040, and then we get a state chair percentage of that. And then they also get categorical, categorical funding that goes along with them. So, that's really where we're seeing that state revenue be a little bit below. And then, when you look at the forecast in terms of the expenditures and the actual expenditures this year versus this time last year, we're tracking about $382,000 to the good, and that's really tied a lot to the efficiencies and that we discussed in terms of how we're staffing and evaluating staffing. I also wanted to point out that next month, we're going to start to see a lot of that start to take in effect because we're just now getting into the first contract pay of fiscal year 23 for a large majority of our employees. So, that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Yep. All right. Thanks, Mr. Espy. Hearing no questions or comments, we'll go to roll call.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Next is recognition of citizens, staff, and students, and we will start with preschool, and I will defer to Ms. Amy Dobson. All right.
You need Steve to help you. I like volunteering, Steve.
You just hit slideshow. I think you meant to hit slideshow, but you hit share. I do that all the time. There you go. Well, it is a privilege to be here and to be able to share. I'm only going to speak momentarily, and then I'm going to turn it over to all of our experts who are in the preschool and doing some really significant work over at Meddler View Elementary. But I'm going to start by sharing with you, just going back to the beginning, and how we are where we are today based on the work that we did about a year ago. And so, let me see if this gets us where we want to go. There we go. So, many of you may be familiar with Preschool Promise and the work that they do in Montgomery County. They are motivated and focused on making sure that every community is educated about the power of preschool. They focus almost entirely on expanding availability of preschool services in the county, and they're really assisting families and helping them find financial resources to pay for preschool and trying to bridge the gap for preschool services. And so, knowing the work that they're doing, and you may have seen some of the work that they're doing in some communities, in the city of Dayton, for example, or you may have heard of some of the work that they're doing in the city of Kettering and with some partnerships there. Dr. Blessing actually initiated some discussion about this time last year with Robin Lightcap and said, "Well, what about us?" And while we see the need for our community, unfortunately, it was kind of like, "Well, not yet," because there are others that may need the full preschool promise initiative more. But it wasn't a "no," it was a "not yet," and "yes, and maybe we can do something to take a step in the right direction." And so, that really opened up some opportunities for our leaders, leaders with preschool promise, to be able to come together and do some brainstorming, looking initially at our preschool readiness data for our community, like what would be the rationale for some investment into Miami'sburg City Schools and the work of preschool. And so, what we know, and we've talked about this as it relates to our kindergarten, full day kindergarten pilot, about 50% of children in Miami'sburg City Schools come ready, demonstrating readiness, according to the kindergarten readiness assessment that we administer in the state. We also have longitudinal data that we have the ability to look at through a partnership with the University of Dayton, where we can see what preschool opportunities our learners have aligned to that KRA data, and it has a lot of information in terms of what students aren't accessing preschool and what those barriers might be. And so, the result of that was collaboration and innovation from leaders and financial officers from Preschool Promise, from the Miami Valley Child Development Centers, and Miami'sburg City Schools in this work. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Susan Woods and Kelly LaMaster. I know you all are familiar with Susan Woods. She's our principal at Meddler View, and she has been instrumental in the success of launching this preschool. And I'm also going to introduce Kelly LaMaster, who is a site supervisor, who is onsite at Meddler View every day as an employee of Miami Valley Child Development Center, who is helping additionally lead this program. I'm going to turn it over to them to really share about the continuum of preschool services that we are now able to provide students in Miami'sburg City Schools as a result of this partnership. Sarah Buzek has also been critical in this work. Unfortunately, she is not able to be with us, but she is exactly where she needs to be, supporting her family and some commitments that they already had. But I am going to turn it over to Susan and Kelly at this time. I'm going to echo the opening of what Mrs. Dobson said. It is an absolute privilege to be a part of a program that we know services our youngest learners and will absolutely benefit K-12. And so, a thank you for your leadership, to the board, to central office, to some of our guests that I know will be introduced later on this evening. True privilege, true honor. You really hit home when you said the site supervisor and Sarah Buzek's role. They are truly those roll-up-your-sleeve individuals at the building level that are making it happen. So, I know Sarah's unable to be here tonight. She's, as you referenced, exactly where she needs to be, and this is a public thank you, Kelly, for your leadership in our building. Asked at the onset of this, can you find a location for a site supervisor to be in the building five days a week? And my first thought was, "I'm not sure if we're going to be able to do it." I am so glad that we were able to do it, like I said, without that leadership, along with the support of our teaching assistants and the actual teachers as well, who will learn just in a moment. This would not be possible. Quick comparison, as we look at those services, we look at the two sites, we look at Maddox Lang, we look at Meddler View. The Maddox Lang is an integrated program that services our students with disabilities, along with their peer models. The license for that location does come through the Ohio Department of Education. It is a half-day program for four days a week, Monday through Friday, 15 sections, eight teachers, 14 instructional assistants, and the size of the building with our preschoolers, 206 students at Maddox Lang. Again, you've already mentioned Sarah Buzek as their supervisor. Meddler View Services, socio-economically diverse program, serving both the Head Start and the non-Head Start qualifying and non-qualifying students, licensed differently, and that is through the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services. Unlike Maddox's half-day program, we are a full-day program, 9:15 to 2:45. Blended collaboration when it comes to the adults that are in the classroom and interacting on a very regular basis with our littles, in that it's Miami'sburg City Schools and Miami Valley CDC employees. We have four sections of those full-day settings, two of which are pre-K-focused environment for those classrooms. Here's where I'm going to pause just a bit. We have four teachers, two of which were able to make it tonight, so I do want to introduce those individuals. Rachel Houston is with us this evening, as is Caroline Witt. Thank you. Also, part of that program are four assistant teachers, two of which are here tonight. We have Julie Johnson and Ashley Cranford. Thank you. We have one family support specialist. Her name is Jo, unable to be there, but also very instrumental. You can all see us nodding. Let's all nod. As she spends hour, two hours, working through that registration process to get the kids into the program, make sure that it's a nice fit, to look at specific needs that the students may need, and then just follows them all the way along in the program. And then, again, standing next to me, of course, is the site supervisor, Kelly LaMaster.
I'm Kelly. Sorry, public speaking is not my forte. I keep getting high heart rate notices on my watch.
Go, Kelly!
So, the program we're running is really a whole-child focused, developmentally appropriate, family-centered experience. I think we would all agree academics are extremely important, but for us, we're finding that there is as much emphasis, if not more, on the social-emotional side of things. I think there's been a greater need demonstrated since the pandemic as well. So, we focus really intensely on giving children those tools they need to identify emotions, regulate their emotions, cooperatively interact with each other, and then we use a system called conscious discipline that really helps to reinforce those practices. And then, as Susan will talk about later, we also get assistance from the Montgomery County ESC with social-emotional learning. So, we're very proud of that. We have family engagement activities scheduled throughout the year, but we encourage the engagement of family members in other ways. We want them to be involved in their children's learning process, whether that is through take-home activities, things like that. I know a lot of our teachers here, a lot of our teaching teams, they will send home weekend activities for the families so they can see what we've been doing all week and then engage in an activity together pertaining to what they learned. But we also focus on ensuring families' overall well-being. Being a Head Start program, we also try to meet the needs of the family as a whole, not just the child, whether that be food assistance, clothing assistance, education assistance for the parents, parenting programs, anything that we can provide or provide resources for, we try to do for them.
So, in terms of funding, the expansion within Miami'sburg City Schools, we could not do this without some critical partners. We have received a $250,000 grant from Preschool Promise to fund this initiative. We additionally received a $50,000 grant from the Ohio Department of Education, Office of School Readiness, Early Childhood Education, and as a result, there are no additional costs to taxpayers for this programming. I will say it again, there is no additional cost to our taxpayers to be able to offer this program that is expanding the continuum of services in a whole-child focused way and serving 68 children at this particular site, which is really remarkable. I also want to specifically point out that this is aligned to our district's vision, right? We educate, innovate, collaborate, inspire are not just words that are on a piece of paper. They're not just rhetoric on our letterhead. We are challenged every day to look for innovative ways to serve the needs of our students. And so, this is an innovative model in our state. I did reach out to fact-check. So, my friend Anita, who I'll have a chance to introduce at the end of the presentation, I reached out to her. I'm like, "Is anybody else doing this?" And she responded, "Like, I think there might be one other district in the entire state that is looking at a model that is integrating, truly collaborating, and putting Head Start programs and local school districts in the same site with staff working collaboratively." We're unclear to what degree that's happening in the region or even in the country. I do know, as of today, we have been officially invited to present at a regional conference for Head Start in Chicago to be able to share the work of this program that we're doing with, I think Region Five is Ohio, Indiana, Illinois, Wisconsin, and Michigan, if I remember correctly. So, it's an opportunity to share.
Do me a favor.
Yeah.
Make sure that Kelly doesn't die if she's got a present.
We won't make her do that. So, it is really exciting that we have the opportunity to be a part of this and that we have the opportunity to serve our students and our community in this way. You can do it.
So, staff development, as Amy mentioned, or I think it was actually Susan, I apologize, with the integration of the staff, that's been a very big change, I think, for all the NBCDC employees. Our staff came back in August, and we participated in all of the Miami'sburg City Schools professional development opportunities alongside with the other faculty in the building. I think that gave us an idea of what we were getting into with the district, which has all been great so far. But it also allowed us to feel embraced by the building. I know there can be some, you know, uneasy feelings because you don't know what to expect, but we've been fully embraced, and it's been just a fantastic experience so far. Quarterly, starting next month, we will have collaborative action planning meetings. I will be in those with Sarah Buzek and other members of Maddox Lang, and that's going to allow us just to kind of combine resources, identify children who may have needs that may exceed what we can provide at our level and who may benefit, you know, from a different environment than Maddox Lang may be able to provide. So, just being able to get together and brainstorm those solutions, implementation of strategies, and what might be best moving forward to meet the needs of each child is a resource that is unique to this program. None of our other locations have that privilege, so I think we're all very excited to see how we can work together through that. Engagement by preschool staff and building and district improvement initiatives. So, again, like I said, we engage in all the professional development days. We'll be there tomorrow at the high school. But then also, all of our teaching staff selected a building leadership team or a teacher-based team to join within the school. Some of the stuff is not, is a little bit harder to apply to the preschool level, such as the teaching and... Yeah. We're working on, like, the teaching and learning aspect on how to incorporate preschool with goals and readiness in those meetings. But it really gives us an idea of what our children will need to work towards. It gives us a sense of ownership and that we can discuss and be a part of building decisions, and it lets us know what the district is doing and what we're doing, what we're here for, pretty much. And then, again, the SEL consultants, we've had some great people coming in and conducting lessons in our classes this week. They were learning about upstairs and downstairs brain on a level that is fun and engaging for the children and just teaching them those concepts that they'll continue to hear if they're enrolled in Miami'sburg City Schools, that social-emotional language that they'll be able to already have familiarity with as they progress throughout their education.
In addition to, of course, the collaboration of both sites, we also want to make sure that we are collaborating with community partners, currently Dayton Metro Library along with our Miami Valley Fire District. Oh, I was going to say, it's right there. I'm reading it. Miami Valley Fire District will do fire prevention in October, blessings in a bag, and then, of course, I know it's been referenced a couple times, but I can't speak highly enough of the impact of our two SEL consultants, Clarissa and Colleen, who have just embraced our four little classrooms and have taken, and I know it's happening at Maddox Lang as well, they've taken that Meddler View roadmap and all the initiatives that we started last year, and they have just brought our little preschoolers right along. Quick story, went into one of the preschool classrooms, I guess maybe yesterday or two days ago, and they were ripping their tissue papers, so you know where I'm going with this, and they were putting it on the letter B. And the little one said to me, "It's my upstairs brain. Tell me more about that." Did you see where she walked? She walked over to where our emotion check-in chart is for Meddler, and I have a great picture of it. She went. And either Clarissa or Colleen had been in all the classrooms, but that was that connect that we made, big picture, K-5, and we brought it down to our preschool. So, that is definitely a partnership with our Montgomery County ECS that we want to continue to grow.
So, as I mentioned earlier, we do have family engagement events scheduled throughout the year. We will, we have October, we have a trunk-or-treat at Maddox Lang, which will be just so much fun. I'm so looking forward to it. And those are, most of them are done in collaboration with Sarah and the Maddox Lang staff, whether they're housed at, I know November, our literacy event, it's going to be housed at Maddox Lang, and then we've decided the math event later on in the year towards the spring, it'll be housed at Meddler View. So, just being able to collaborate not only with Sarah, but with their staff as well, because we'll have committees to plan the events made up of staff from both sides. I think that just allows us to present a better engagement opportunity because they know their families, we know our families, so we can collaborate, just to make a more welcoming event for the preschool families and program as a whole.
So, I've mentioned prior to this that this would not be possible without some key partners in this initiative. Preschool Promise, Miami Valley Child Development Centers, the Ohio Department of Education, and their Office of Early Learning and School Readiness, and of course, Miami'sburg City Schools. I probably haven't put enough emphasis enough so far into the real power of having John at the table with Don Hohendorf from NBCDC, having innovative fiscal officers at the table who are willing to think outside of the box in terms of how can we make this happen, and how can we all be comfortable streamlining these federal dollars into the programs in clean ways so that we can be able to provide this support for our students is really remarkable. I think that we just really hit the sweet spot in terms of having people who are like-minded and willing to look for opportunities for early learning. We are fortunate that we have some individuals who are able to be here to meet you, and I'll give them the opportunity to speak. From the Miami Valley Child Development Centers, we have Steve Candle, who is our chief operating officer with us this evening, and from the Ohio Department of Education, we have Anita Armstrong, who is with us. So, you both are welcome to come up if you'd like to speak to the board in any way. You're welcome.
See, I have the opposite problem with Kelly. I love public speaking, so you guys get comfortable. I'll just be here for a while. No, I'm actually new to MP CDC. I was actually in public ed for 25 years, leading I was actually in public ed for twenty-five years leading up to this. So I'm super excited to see this collaboration, really of what NBCDC brings to the table, and really partnering with a public school district rather than just kind of being in the public school. And so I'm excited about all of this work that they're kind of sharing that's happening together. And ultimately, it's going to create better students for you in K-312. And ultimately, it's going to create a better society for us here in Miami-Sburg, Montgomery County, Dayton, the bigger area. So thank you for your innovation. Thank you for bringing everybody to the table. And I guess I'm short and sweet, to be truthful tonight. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for the invitation to be here.
Of course.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Thanks for supporting the program.
So, yeah. Oh, I'm delighted. It's been an honor and a privilege. So we know from the research that the first two thousand days of a child's life sets the stage for the twenty-five thousand days that follow. And I just applaud your efforts for making sure that the children in this community have a rich, robust, meaningful, and really impactful first two thousand days. So it's been a real honor and a privilege to be a part of your journey that has brought you all to this point. First of all, through the Heading to Kindergarten Project that you were a part of with Miami Valley CDC, and then through the ECE funding that's helping to support the project. We really applaud the efforts of Amy and her team, and Berta and her team, in building relationships, creating partnerships, and forming this collaboration that's going to do really, really amazing things. Mostly because they're bringing family engagement, they're bringing community engagement, and high-quality services to the children in your community. I'm especially excited when I hear you talk about family engagement and community engagement because that's where my heart is. That's where I come from, from the Head Start world. And so that really makes me really pleased to know that you'll be providing these comprehensive services to all the children who'll be receiving, who'll be in the preschool program. I, again, just want to appreciate the dedication and the innovation, the collaboration, the support that all of you have provided to make this project happen. And we're excited to hear the stories and to see the successes over the next year. So thanks a lot.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah.
Great. Any questions that you have for me or anyone that's here? Except Kelly. Give her a pass.
Amy, in regards to the Chicago trip.
Yeah.
Who's all going to the Chicago trip? And who's going to be doing the presentation?
The presentation will be given by Berta, who is the Chief Executive Officer for NBCDC and myself.
Okay.
It would be awesome if we could have taken an entire team. I don't know that that's in the realm of possibility.
Now, is that more of to present what has been accomplished here? Or is that to gain new ideas of what may be happening throughout the country, or both?
Both. Yeah, we'll have the opportunity to share what we're doing here with other program leaders and school district leaders, early childhood leaders and teachers. But there will also be a number of sessions that'll be available for me to expand my knowledge of preschool services and get other ideas for innovation that I may be able to bring back. And fortunately, I'll be there with Berta, who has been kind of a partner since the beginning here. So we will be able to, you know, be able to take some ideas and potentially bring them back for our community here.
Now, I'll ask one other question because I wasn't like the other three individuals here. I know we go to the OSBA conference in November. Is that something down the road that we get involved with at that level or not? Or is that something that doesn't get more or less put into that type of a session?
I think it would be a great session.
Right, that we can share the districts and the state.
Absolutely.
Sure.
I know, I mean, when we go up there, we go through a number of different sessions.
Yeah.
And people present things all the time of what they have done within their district. So that's why I was just wondering.
Yeah, that's a great thought.
Take it on the road.
I think generally... Exactly. Kelly?
Kelly's gonna be the guest speaker.
I would expect that the board likely gets some kind of notification, or maybe John or Laura, about a request for proposals or requests for presentations and...
We do, yeah.
Yeah, so this, yeah, I'd be happy to perceive that.
I just wanted to say that that's an awesome idea of the way that you're thinking. And this is a model program. Yasi Galia and Miami Valley have done something similar. But this is innovative, and this is a model. This is what Head Start wants, this is what education would like to see between preschool programs and districts. And so the more that you can talk about it, share your work, share your story, share your experience, I think it will encourage and empower others to venture out.
Anita, I was going to say the hundred-thousand-dollar question, but it's a whole lot more than that. Where do you see the funding of this in the future? I just, it bothers me a little bit when we start talking funding, but I want to know who I need to put the pressure on. Do you see a couple of...
That is also worth it. Preschool Promise does. I didn't recognize that. They do a lot of lobbying with legislators to get legislation in place, you know, and I think they're doing work not only at the state level but at the federal level, to really put pressure on funding preschool.
Yeah, and you just answered my question, Amy, because Tim and I, Anita and her, we went to school with one of our state representatives, and I actually had the Senator Naras, he was my campaign manager when the first time I ran for the school board many years ago. And so, you know, if it would help for us to speak with them about the funding of this, we'd be more than happy to. I think we're very blessed to have this in our district. I really do. I mean, we need, you know, this kind of stuff we need everywhere across our country in the world, really. But it's fabulous that we have this.
I mean, great comment, Chris, about presenting at OSBA or even VASSA. And Anne was an integral part of our team. I think her and I had talked preschool when I first arrived, and she had some conversations with our commissioners and folks that put us in contact with Robin. And so I think it would be a good angle for her to share as part of, if we worked with OSBA, how board members can be a vital part of that decision-making and, you know, advocating for our youngest learners. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I was, I don't know if I can just make a comment, but...
Of course.
I mean, the whole process, I was more of an observer, but it was dynamic between you, Laura, Robin, Berta. I had never been in those kind of meetings before. It was amazing to me. And then to go over to the preschool and see what's happening, it just gave me chills. And for Susan, her whole staff moved their rooms so they could have this hub, you know, in the school where the four classrooms are. Sarah Buzik, and then Susan Free to take over as, you know, also being so involved in it. I just, it's just really blessing to me. I'm an early childhood educator. I know that when kids hear rich language, you know, they're going to be more likely to be good readers. And they're going to hear it, and they're going to have all kinds of activities. And it just, I know it really pleases all of us for kids to get a good early start. And we have kids that, you know, don't have access. And I think hopefully we have almost everybody having access now. I'm not sure, but...
Well, we're much closer than we were a year ago. I can tell you that.
So I just want to thank everybody for your efforts. I couldn't believe, like, just even after one week, how well-behaved the kids were out there. That was amazing. It was just awesome. Thank you.
Kelly, that's not for you, is it?
Yeah.
We got Chris.
You better hope it's not for me.
I take that back. Maybe you don't want Chris.
But yeah, thank you so much, everyone, for all your effort. I know, I know, Amy, just for you to, the selection process and everything has been probably a ton of work. But you know what? I mean, even if we can do it for one kid, it was worth it.
Yeah, time well spent, labor of love, no doubt about it.
Well, ladies, one thing I have to say. I've talked to quite a few people about what's going on out there, and everything's been fabulous. So thank you, and God bless you.
Well, and thanks for all the funding, too. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Thanks, Susan, staff, for the presentation and information. Steve and Anita, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You three all came from inside the school. Cory and I...
I did not follow you at all.
I did. I got it, Chris.
I got it.
So people just go a little slower than us.
Yeah, you guys were all teachers or worked inside the school, and Cory and I had not.
I just didn't know what you were referring to. Thank you.
As we move along in recognition of citizen staff and students, we go to National Custodian Day, which is October 2nd, 2022. While they work and we sleep, sometimes we walk around them in the halls and not always seeing them or the work as important. That's why we celebrate National Custodian Day, which rolls around every October 2nd. It recognizes the hard work that it takes to keep our public facilities in tip-top shape as well as the people who diligently work to make sure that we have schools and workplaces that are spotless and sanitary. Custodians are our first line of defense on the war on germs, and often is a thankless job. National Custodian Day shows appreciation to the custodians who clean the office buildings in our schools. And I would have to say, Ms. Carol, as a leader of that group, I can tell you, I know it's been said multiple times throughout the year, but you guys do a wonderful job. You guys do an outstanding job throughout the year with the work that you guys do in the summertime to lead up into the start of the school year. Definitely doesn't go unnoticed. And it's a tireless job. It is a thankless job, but it never goes unnoticed by any of us. I think the principals on down to the staff, as members of the board and of the staff up here. So send our regards and thank yous to them. It's a deserving day on October 2nd, and thank you. Anybody else?
No, just did what Chris said, you know. I just remember, like, before school started, you know, the kids were going in and out of the buildings already. And I'm like, okay, they're trying to clean and get the school ready and deal with that, too. And you're very appreciated.
When I first started teaching, I had a teacher say, "Make real good friends with your custodian, your secretary and the lunch lady." Because they basically run. You're here because of them. So, yeah, thank you.
And bus drivers. Your coach, especially, because I'd like to get plates a long time.
Well, that person didn't say bus drivers to me, so that's fine.
Next is Fire Prevention Week. Next month, our buildings will participate in Fire Prevention Week. Since 1922, the NFPA has sponsored the Public Observance of Fire Prevention Week. In 1925, President Calvin Coolidge proclaimed Fire Prevention Week a national observance, making it the longest-running public health observance in our country. During Fire Prevention Week, children, adults, and teachers learn how to stay safe in case of a fire. Firefighters provide lifesaving public education in an effort to drastically decrease casualties caused by fires. This year's theme is "Fire Won't Wait. Plan Your Escape." This year, Fire Prevention Week is observed October 9th through the 15th, 2022, reinforcing the critical importance of developing a home escape plan with all members of the household and practicing it regularly. In addition, this October represents the 100th anniversary of Fire Prevention Week, the nation's longest-running health observant on record. Our district is appreciative and would like to thank the men and women who serve as part of our Miami Valley Fire District and surrounding fire districts. We should also like to thank the Miami Valley Fire District, Mr. Bob Pugh, and myself, providing a variety of resources for our students. And I will say that since we have got a new chief, things are going to look a little bit different. They have taken Bob Pugh and myself out of the schools, so to speak. You will be given a crew now. So they will be assigned a school, and they will come in not only the month of October, but they will come in at other times throughout the year that if you... I will send you the email or his contact information, Battalion Chief Mike Rink, and then he can schedule that where they would come in, or they'll just come in. They could read books to children. They could go out on recess. They could go out and eat lunch. Whatever you have going on throughout your school, we will be reaching out. I know I talked to Kelly earlier, though it's with Eric right now. We are going to go into the sixth grade. And I know Fire Prevention Week is October 9th through the 15th, and we are on fall break. But the whole month of October is dedicated at the firehouse for fire prevention. We use it as a month. And then we hit Dayton Christian and Bishop Libel East and West campuses during that time. So we're going to start doing things a little bit different. And then the fire department's going to be getting into the schools more than what they normally do just in October, so... But I'll pass along the thanks to Bob Pugh as well. Next is approval of adoption revision of board policy. A is approval to weigh the first reading of board policy. It is recommended that the Board of Education weigh the first reading of the board policy. Non-certificated, non-licensed staff contracts and compensation plans, non-bargaining. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following board policy: non-certificated, non-licensed staff contracts and compensation plans. C is approval of adoption revision of board policies A and B. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve adoption revision of board policies items A Alpha through B Bravo. May I have a motion for those two items, please?
I move to recommend that the Board of Education approve the adoption revision of board policy items A and B.
Well, second. Motion by Mrs. Neese and seconded by Mr. Lewis. Does this go to Mr. Homan?
Sure. Back when we did the OSBA policy reviews, as we've been kind of going through and reviewing that, we talked about certain ones missing when it came back from OSBA. This is one of them. And this aligns with back when we did the Teamsters contract, when we reduced the probationary time period. That never got carried over with the new board policy. So we try to keep those aligned because a lot of times we share people, they move from one category to another or into a different bargaining unit, so...
Any questions or comments in regards to those two items? Hearing none, may I have a roll call? Hearing none, may I have a roll call?
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Next on tonight's agenda is consent agenda. A is the approval of overnight extended student trips. A is, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following overnight extended student strip, student trip. Myhersburg High School Media Arts, this is a trip to New York City in 2023. B is approval of out-of-state travel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following out-of-state travel. This is the same trip, it's just out of state, which is in New York. C is the approval of memorandum of understanding between the Myhersburg City School District and the Teamsters Union 957. Superintendent and Treasurer CFO recommend that the Board of Education approve the attached memorandum of understanding with the Teamsters Union number 957. D is adoption of free and reduced-price lunch programs for the 2022-2023 school year. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve district participation in free and reduced-price lunch program for 2022-2023 school year. E, approval of consent items A Alpha through D Delta. May I have a motion for those four items, please?
I'll move for the adopt, I'm sorry. I will move for the approval of consent items A through D.
Motion by Mr. Lewis?
Second.
Second by Mr. Daffler, so. A and B are the trip that the students take every year, and that doesn't change, so.
Tech program.
Yes.
Item C, that's an MOU between the district and Teamsters. So one of the things that we've been talking about is people, to give opportunities for those that are retiring for the days that are not compensated within a severance package, to donate those into the SICLE Bank, so other members that are going through some hardships and times would be able to benefit from those days that other members would not be otherwise using.
Okay.
And then D, a free reduced lunch program, that's typical September approval.
Right.
To participate in the program.
Any questions in regard to the consent agenda? Hearing none, may I have a roll call?
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Five is the Human Resources Agenda items. A is the approval of personnel reports, certificated and classified. B is the approval of personnel reports, supplemental stipends, certificated and classified. In both sections, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel reports. Employment in the Myhersburg City School District is contingent upon the candidate submitting to and passing a BCII and FBI criminal record check in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code and pre-employment drug screening in accordance with adopted board policies. C, approval of Human Resources Items A and B. May I have a motion for those two items in Human Resources, please?
I move for the approval of Human Resources Items A and B.
Motion by Mr. Daffler?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Toadvine. Mr. Homan?
Business as usual.
Okay. I've looked at it. I mean, everything is business as usual, but I didn't know if you wanted to highlight anything or not, so. Hearing no comments, may I have a motion? Or may I have a vote? Sorry, Mr. Lewis.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Moving along in number six, agreements and contracts. Approval of beverage provider agreement. A, the Superintendent, Treasurer, CFO, and Director of Business recommended that the beverage provider agreement be provided between Pepsi Beverage Company and the Myhersburg City School District. B is the approval of memorandum of understanding between the Myhersburg City School District and Myhersburg Police Department. It is recommended by the Superintendent and Treasurer and the Board of Education approve the MOU with the Myhersburg Police Department as presented. C is the approval of medical insurance, dental insurance, life insurance, and voluntary vision insurance for the 2023 calendar year. The Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the following plans with the Southwest Educational Purchasing Council for medical insurance, dental insurance, life insurance, and voluntary vision insurance for the 2022, 2023 calendar year. Medical insurance, three options, two high deductible health plans and a PPO through Anthem. Dental insurance, two options, Delta Dental and Orthodontics with or without orthodontics. Life insurance, OX Incorporated, a securing financial company, and finally, the voluntary vision insurance. D is the approval of agreement with Senior Assistance Incorporated. It is recommended by the Superintendent and Director of Business Services to enter into an agreement with Senior Assistance Incorporated for student transportation to the Wellness Center. E is the approval of agreement with the Warren County Educational Service Center. Superintendent and Treasurer CFO recommend approval of the attached agreement with the Warren County Educational Service Center for student services at WCESC Wellness Center. F is the approval agreement with Dayton Cincinnati Technology Services LLC. It is recommended by the Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent of Business and Human Resources to approve the agreement for 14 system carts with Dayton Cincinnati Technology Services LLC for Jane Chance Elementary School and Answer and Lovino Chromebooks for Myhersburg Middle School and Myhersburg High School per the attached quote. G is approval of enrollment with informing self-equity fellowship program. It is recommended by the Superintendent, Treasurer, CFO to approve the enrollment of two teams, 20,000 each, total of 40,000, in informing self-quality fellowship programs for '22-'23 school year. Programming will include a total of 13 Myhersburg staff participating in 13 professional development sessions focused on cultivating and informing an equity mindset through establishing a community of practice focused on inclusive excellence. As there are no other programs that offer this service, it is considered sole source of, for purpose or procurement. I'm getting close to the end.
You are the reading. You are the reading.
Both. H is approval agreement between contracts A Alpha through G Golf. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve agreement contracts A Alpha through G Golf. May I have a motion for those items, please?
I move to recommend that the Board of Education approve agreements and contract items A through G.
I second.
Motion by Mrs. Neese and seconded by Mr. Toadvine. Mr. Homan? For Dr. Blessing?
Rock, paper, scissors. Okay, so our original agreement with Pepsi was up this year. So we met several times with them to kind of renegotiate and go through a new contract with them. They were, I think, pretty generous in what they ended up coming back to us with. They did not hold our feet to the fire, because we weren't able to sell during the COVID years and with the supply and demand, they really backed off some of those. So we were appreciative of them for that. And then I think as you look at the 10-year deal of how they increase on there, the number of cases and the threshold, I think that's pretty attainable for us now that we're back into full swing. And we do talk with them pretty much on a weekly to bi-weekly basis to make sure that our machines are stocked, the machines are working. We've been really on top of them to make sure that we're able to meet these quotas to get our revenue services, so.
Are those GPS? I won't say GPS. Is there something that signals back to them that it's getting low, so they don't have to make an unnecessary run? That's what I thought.
Yes.
Item B is a MOU with our Myhersburg City Police Department. This is kind of an innovative partnership through a pilot they have, kind of goes along with our Safety and Sense of Belonging Strategic Plan goals. They have, the city has acquired a grant through the state called FUSIS. And these are systems that, we already have school cameras in our district. And they are partnering with the local businesses, and they would like to partner with us so that they can utilize some of our school cameras in case of an emergency on our campus where they would need to see, we would ask for their help, and they would be able to respond to any type of incident, crisis, accident. And they could actually link into our school cameras and see, like, the progress or activity and progress as they're coming to help better prepare themselves for their response to this. Right now, because it's a pilot, we're only going to be working with them to provide access through the high school, because the FUSIS system is basically a little device that only holds so many cameras that they can have access to. And so they were only given a limited amount. So we're going to try that with all of your permission and support to see if we can better protect our schools in case there was. They would access our school cameras in the event of a call. You have to be on duty and available to access that. So we feel like it's been a great partnership, a great discussion. Kind of goes along with them when the city police worked in our buildings this summer and did some of their active shooter training for their staff. That was a great experience, and they were able to learn parts of our building. So this is just an ongoing partnership and ways to work together. No costs, of course, to either party.
So item C is for insurance for the '23 school year. We'll remain with the EPC. For Anthem is our main provider for medical insurance. The rate of the 7% increase in the negotiated agreement, those are set off as, if there's a certain percentage, then the defined dollar contribution goes up as well. And John, I do believe it's a 3% increase as well, so the defined dollar contribution for that. With that increase, I think we're pretty fortunate, considering we are running about 110% payout. 110% profit loss, thank you, with claims, so. You know, that has helped us this year being part of that consortium in terms of that, so. And there's still three options they have to choose from in terms of that.
D and E are just student contracts to provide services for those students. You need those services.
Once again, we can't fill those.
No.
For the transportation one and then others, the educational placement, correct? We don't have those kind of services.
F is.
Transport.
Right, yeah, limited, limited supply in terms of employees.
F is already part of the appropriations. It's just due to the size of it, we need to seek your approval to place the orders.
And then, and G, this is again a grant fund. We're using some Title II funds to expand our equity training for our staff. And so it will be part of the Equity Fellows that, I think Susan and Amy referenced, Montgomery County ESC. They provide a lot of services to us, and one of those services is professional development. So they have, they work with all of the schools around the county, and one of their professional development programs is the Equity Fellows. So we're looking forward to expanding our education in that area to provide a better safety and sense of belonging to all of our students and our staff.
All right, thank you very much. We shall have a roll call.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
I abstain due to my wife's position at the school.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Seven is the Financial Agenda items. Authorization for amendment to the Appropriations and Certificate of Estimated Resources. It is recommended that the Treasurer CFO, that the Appropriations and Certificate of Estimated Resources be amended as listed in the attached reports. May I have a motion for this item, please?
I move that we recommend the Treasurer CFO, excuse me. I recommend that, I can't even talk. Go ahead.
Run, Amy.
I move for the Authorization for Amendment to the Appropriations and Certificate of Estimated Resources.
Motion by Mr. Lewis, and I will second. All right?
Yep.
Mr. Espy?
Yeah, nothing, nothing very large to note here. The only thing that I did want to bring up is now that we, Fund 599, miscellaneous federal grant fund, now has the safety grant. So that's going in the appropriations as well as the certificate. I should say no large changes, but there is a large amount of money to approve, but no large changes, other than that.
I question it. It goes along with financial, but not this particular.
Okay.
You had mentioned earlier the wellness money. Where exactly does the wellness money come from?
It comes through our foundation payments. So in fiscal year 2019, Governor Dewine, you know, really, he set up a funding plan. It was one of his, you know, passion projects to set up a funding plan for success and wellness funds for mental health, as well as other items. There's a wide variety of how it can be used. It was in Fund 467, so it was outside of the general fund. So with House Bill 110, which is the Fair School Funding Plan, what ended up happening was it became part of the general fund, which essentially allowed it to be more of a steady stream of funding for school districts. However, we went from about $1.4 million allocation in Fund 467 to about $485,000 in the general fund. So substantially less funding, but more of a steady stream of funding, because a lot of districts didn't, you know, they didn't want to put in long-term projects if they didn't know that the funding would be in place. But it's part of our bimonthly foundation payments that we get.
Thank you.
Hearing no other comments or questions, we will do a roll call.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Eight is acceptance of donations. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the following list of donations. All monies will be used through the school's 018 account unless indicated otherwise. $100 from Estates to Go to the Myhersburg School District Community Connections Program. Youth golf shoes valued at $2,800 from Shay Griffin. At Kingdom Roofing and Home Improvements. $10,000 from the Myhersburg High School alumni. This was from their golf outing, to the Myhersburg City School District. Various knitted hats and scarves from the residents of Trinity Community at Miami Township. Ender 3 Pro 3D printer valued at $160 from Matty Zikafus to Jane Chance Elementary School STEM lab. May I have a motion to accept those donations?
I move for the acceptance of the donations.
Second. Motion by Mr. Daffler and seconded by Mr. Lewis. And once again, we always appreciate donations. Do you want to comment in regards to the alumni?
Sure, absolutely. I mean, a great thanks and appreciation for their continued support. This is a donation they make every year, so we try to spread that wealth throughout the district. Destination Imagination, we plan to use it with some of the, we had some volunteers from the staff. So work with them and their programs to benefit and all of the schools. We try to split it up and find the greatest needs, so it's very much appreciated, so. And we're always, it'll be the last Friday of July moving forward in 2023. So if anyone wants to go for help, let me know. Much appreciated.
Yeah, I was just going to say too, that this man from the Estates To Go, I don't know if you ever have any plays or anything in your school. He is more than willing to provide furniture or whatever you might need in your school. He really wants to help the schools. The one day I was down there talking to him, he also donated a band jacket, an old band jacket. He just handed me, you know, a check for $100, but he said to let everyone know that there's anything that you can use that he has, he wants to help. So I think his first, I'm not sure of his last name, but I think his first name's Dale, so. Really nice place, if you've never been there.
Once again, thanks for the donations and where can we have a roll call?
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
We're down to reports. The first report is from the Miami Valley Career Technology Center. Mr. Isaacovich is not with us this evening, however, Dr. Blessing is going to give that report. So I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you, Mr. Isaacovich. Wanted to apologize for not being here this evening. He's got a family event as well. He wanted to let us know that he is attending the MCTC All Advisory Dinner on October 6th. At this event, they will be having over 400 of their advisory council members in attendance and meeting with the MCTC staff. Big construction updates. The project continues at a frenzied pace as we continue to ensure we meet all deadlines. Supply line shortages are a challenge and this month it's electrical breakers. And at one point, we were missing hundreds and now we're only short about five. These are all related to water heaters. We are close to moving into the building spine and paint, carpet, ceiling tiles and other finishing touches are the points of emphasis. The final elements for the heavy equipment barn will be installed over the next month and we will soon be able to finalize the entire agricultural complex for use. In the next month and a half, we will be installing the equipment for precision machinery and dental assisting. Over the next few months, our staff will be installing computers, equipment and smaller items. In addition, furniture will be arriving over the next several months and will be installed in instructional and office areas. Onward and upward we go. The Miami'sburg Satellite Program is up and running and that's the engineering and the coding courses here in the high school at Miami'sburg and we have 144 students enrolled in those classes. I visited, it's going really well. Alex is a great instructor. He feels very welcome and appreciative of how welcoming we've been to having him as part of our staff. So I have an enrollment sheet broken down. I'll pass out to all of the board members. Mr. Isaacovich wanted to let you all know that we are second or third in like attendance. So there's one school above us and we are very close to being second or third of enrollment. So I have that breakdown for you. Also, the Career Center has an ongoing enrollment and they've got their course catalogs out, so I'm going to pass those out to you. They actually have some new programs they're going to be offering. And their pre-engineering, drones and GIS technologies, which we have had students that have been interested in that and we've had to send them to other career centers. So it's exciting that we can send them now to ours. And then pre-law and legal studies. MCTC is running at full capacity and full enrollment, so that's great news as well. Just some important dates for the MCTC, their quarter ends, first quarter ends. Midterm is September 16th. Their end of the quarter is September 13th, similar to ours. I think ours is a little bit later. And then we are touring the MCTC Board and Administration on October 11th. So that is it. But I have some really great course catalogs I'll pass down your way. And then I've got the enrollment information that we talked about last month.
All right, thank you. Next on the...
Chris, I would like to go next. My grandson's playing tonight and he's a senior.
We can go to Montgomery County Drug Free Coalition. Mr. Dale Toadvine?
There was a meeting today and it lasted forever. They had a lot of people do some presentations, but it was interesting. One that I wanted to make sure that I put out there for the principals and Amy might be able to help out with this one. But, and with Stacy, are you guys familiar at all with the let me see, I can't talk tonight.
Be quiet.
Did me a favor, would you? Take him to do something with it. It's young Marines. They, it's young Marines that are wanting to have a curriculum in the classroom where they will come out. And the funny part of it is, I gotta even laugh now when they talk about the young Marines doing it, is that the guy that was during the presentation was probably in his 80s. He was a Marine from 87 years old, but he was very, very good. And I will pass this on, but his name was Ray Gerard. Are you familiar with it at all? It's a competition that they have between all the schools in Miami Valley that want to participate. And they had schools from Ogles, Butler, Champaign, Clark, Dart, Green, Logan, Mercer, Miami, Montgomery, Preble, Shelby and Warren Counties that have already been participating in this contest and it's a weekly contest. And they have them do, make like a, one of the things, they have to do posters. And then they judge those posters and then they give a actual some type of a presentation and stuff to the school and make a pretty big deal out of it. And it's all basically about drugs and alcohol and, you know, they want that type of curriculum to be big, that, you know, that there's people like Marines and and Armed Services and stuff that are trying to make it clear that they would hope that they would move on in their life without taking part in that. I don't know, I can't talk tonight because I can always talk. The other thing was, the Sheriff, he shared with us about some of the target operations that they've been having where they actually, the last one that they set up was for Moraine, Vandalia and Kettering. And it was on August 26th. Of course, they do these unannounced. But they picked up four felons that were drug dealers and busted them on that day. And what's going on there when I say that? All those police departments are working together to bust these guys. They had two of them with drug paraphernalia. By the way, those four felonies, like, were actual drug dealers, not users. Which was very, they were very proud of themselves on that one. They had three busts where there were guns that they had guns on the felons, actually had guns and they were not allowed to have them. That's, they're just telling you how appreciative, I guess we should be with the danger that those guys are in every time they try to do something like that. There was another speaker there from Recovery Ohio. She's the new CEO for Recovery Ohio. Her name's Rebecca Hall. And she will be doing a presentation at our November meeting. If any of you would like to take part in the November meeting, let me know. I can make sure that they catch up for that. But it's pretty good stuff that Recovery Ohio is. Grow is, there's several men and women that go to the prisons and they introduce themselves to the inmates and help them to find recovery when they get out of there if they are addicted to drugs or alcohol or anything like that. And that's, that's kind of interesting that they saw 104 prisoners last month. That's getting some stuff done, you know? And a lot of this is volunteers too, it's not paid positions. Montgomery County Epidemiologist spoke today and she said that the overdose deaths have gone down in the past couple of months for Montgomery County. But that's not so for some of the counties around us, which was kind of interesting. Because Dayton's usually been, you know, Dayton area's been the worst. They said that the white men are usually the highest deaths that occur from drugs, but right now the black male deaths are going up at an alarming rate for some reason. The drugs that's killing them is methamphetamines that are mixed with other drugs. And the overdoses seem to be going, they're happening in homes now, more so than out in drug houses and stuff. It's actually happening within the people's homes. And sad enough, the children and people are finding them dead. The thing that's baffling, I guess, the people is that heroin only is responsible for 2% of the deaths now. It used to be like the number one and now it's only 2%. The deaths are coming from, the largest deaths are coming from individuals, mainly addicts that are went through recovery, they come out and they are smoking drugs instead of injecting them. And this is a big thing now that they're, you know, they're finding that they want, when I say they, the Sheriff's Deck, he wants people to know to be on the lookout for the signs that there may not be any needles laying around, there may not be, you know, because that's not what's going on. It's smoking paraphernalia and it's not just marijuana that they're smoking, it's other drugs. And they're finding a lot of people deceased from smoking. There's a, for Celebrate Recovery, their motto pretty much is they want to help the hurts, the habits and the hangups. And if anybody would like to go to any of the meetings for the Christian Life Center that for Celebrate Recovery, you can go to the website, just go to the Celebrate Recovery website. And there's about 200 people that are being helped every month there now. That's an amazing number. But that's what we were told today. And there again, most of that is pro bono from a lot of professionals that psychologists and doctors and there's all kinds of people that's in the coalition that you'd be kind of appreciative that they, the professions that they're in and they spend that much time with helping these people. Here's something I found very interesting. Sheriff's Deck said that they had a big meeting with some people in the area that wanted to put vending machines around with Narcan and safe sex items and some things like that. And it's not for, you know, it's not going to be out there where children are going to be able to get to it and that kind of thing. But I don't know whether it's going to happen because there was a lot of kickback from some people about it. And he was like shocked, you know, that there would be people there that were fighting them putting things out there with saving people's lives. You know, he kind of made it like the, what's the thing Tim that they use to shock people? Fibulator, the fibrillators, yeah. You know, Narcan's like a fibrillator now, you know, it's saving lives. And he was just amazed that there was people there against that. It was a big, long meeting today and I'm sorry it took so long, but it's kind of interesting and important stuff, so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Toadvine. Next, go back to Legislative Liaison, Mr. Corey Daffler.
Not much going on here. There's, you know, the election's coming up. I don't think they have much going. One thing I did want to mention in House Bill 110, there was an amendment to the Higher Vice Code which appears to remove school districts' ability to conduct raffles. Still seems that boosters can conduct raffles without a bingo license. The OSBA is in communication with policymakers to get more information on this. I don't know why that would be an amendment in the bill, but it just seems odd.
I think it was inadvertently put in there and so they're talking about an amendment to the amendment potentially.
Gotcha.
That's just what I've heard, though.
You got to pass a bill to know what's in the bill, I guess. I don't know. It's, gotcha. Other than that, that's all I got. It's pretty quiet right now with the election coming.
Student Achievement Liaison, Mr. Tim Lewis.
Well, we have 10 days of school in August, something like that. Yeah, so we will not have students other than month and stuff until next month.
Good, all right. And then District News and Information, I am going to refer this to Ms. Nice.
Congratulations to the Miami'sburg High School 2022 Homecoming Court. Justin Davis, Kate Fong, Tate Middleton, Cassia Zambut, she's our wrestler, right?
Yep.
Yeah, Parker Hoskins, Penelope Seeks, Specs Ismail, Bella Trace, Gage Murphy, Cassie Noah, Sophie Osborne, Jackson McGowan, Ada Postico, Jason Ball, Olivia Taylor, Drew Kopsey, Anna Newkirk, Christian Davis, Sadie Carpenter and Kaiser Cornwell. You can check out the website Spotlight section for more pictures. And what's the date of the homecoming, Dr. Blessing?
Next Friday is our homecoming game and the date is next Thursday.
Okay, so, yeah, all right.
Now we go to comments around the shoe here. I will start with Mr. Corey.
Just with the Custodial Staff Day, October 2nd, just thanks to the custodial staff and all the work they do keeping the schools clean. And the preschool promise presentation was nice and it is, it's awesome what we've got going on there. That's all I got. I won't take any of Dale's time.
Mr. Lewis?
All right. Again, the National Custodian Day on October 2nd, very well deserved. Also, I wanted to say big thank you. A lot of times we say thank you to the Treasurer's Office, thank you, John, for this. I did want to say, I want to thank Nicole Thunderberg, Pam Bell, Marilyn Cooper, Kate Burden, as well as John Espy. You make our jobs so much easier because we, at least for me, I understand things so much more now than I did. It's just you have a way of being able to break it down. And, you know, as we talked about, like with the custodians, it's a thankless job. I think we forget, I mean, I know I did in 39 years of teaching. I forgot about all the work that the Treasurer's Office did. I appreciated my check, but the only time anybody really brought him up was when something went wrong. That's what I mean by a thankless job, but we appreciate. That's what I mean by a thankless job, but we appreciate everything you're doing and your whole staff, so thank you.
Yeah, just basically what Corey, Mr. Lewis, and Mr. Daffler said, and, you know, I know being a custodian puts a lot of wear and tear on your body. I think, you know, Carol knows that. She just had a knee replacement, so, you know, we appreciate that, you know, you do that hard work. And I was going to say something about our initiative, but I already did. I do want to say that I really like this investment in this Equity Fellowship. I think, you know, that's going to help us continue to close that gap and be culturally responsive for our students, and I just really think that's a great investment. I love it. And that's it.
I will be quick. I missed my 7:30 timeline, but I did want to say thank you for the presentation tonight, Mrs. Woods, whole staff. That was really nice, informative to me, more so than I even knew. Amy, interested to see what comes out of Chicago, and then, you know, the only reason I brought up OSBA is because we do the same thing on the fireside when we go to Indianapolis, and as an instructors conference, we get stuff out from out West all the time of what they may be doing and sharing, or on the East Coast. So that's why I brought it, you know? You know, information is knowledge, and so that's why I brought it up in that regard. So thank you to Amy, and to Sarah, and the staff, and Mrs. Woods, so thank you. Ms. Carol, I think we've all mentioned it, so we, you know how much you're appreciated, the whole custodial staff, so thank you. So with that, I will, oh, congratulations to the members of the homecoming. That's always an exciting time, and let's hope we have nice weather, and it's not raining or cold or anything else, so. Mr. Espy?
Yeah, I just want to recognize all the hard work that's gone on with this preschool project. It's been, it was great to be in a room full of people pushing each other, but doing it in a way that was student-focused, and so it's really cool to see that project kind of take flight. And back from my time in the classroom, and I know I mentioned this on the opening day, but custodians and custodians just make the gears turn for the school district, and we really appreciate everything that they do in the summer to get us ready for school, but just to keep the gears turning for the school year, and I just want to appreciate and recognize all that work, so thank you all very much.
Kudos, I mean, kudos to everyone, and ditto to what everyone else has mentioned already this evening. I want to add three things. This morning, I had the privilege, along with Katie Lucas, Shannon Rupert, and Ally Masters, and one of our new school counselors, Alexandra, attended the Schools in Excellence Prevention Celebration. So this is where we all got together with all of the other districts in Montgomery County, all 14 districts, and some private schools, and our schools were awarded our Prevention and Excellence Awards. I believe all of our schools have reached platinum. Maddox, this was their first year, and I think they received possibly a gold, and our middle, our high school received it this year. I think they got silver. I'll have to double-check that. But excellent representation. It was great to hear the ESC recognized Miami-Sburg for their commitment to prevention and exposing our students and making them aware and helping them in all aspects of just good practice, best practice. And they really committed Miami-Sburg on incorporating that best practice into our strategic plan, so that was really a great way to start my day, and just made me feel like what a great thing we have going on here at Miami-Sburg. And then we received our school report card, and we received, out of the four of the five areas that the state, I guess, evaluates us on, we were meeting or exceeding in four of those five-star areas, so that was exciting after what we've been through for the last three school years, to know that it's been tough, but we have persevered, and we appreciate everyone, all the staff and our families and our community for supporting us. It's been tough, but this shows some of that hard work, even though they're just snapshots, and we can display and showcase, as we did this evening, what we're all about. And, you know, to end the day with preschool promise and the promise in the collaboration with NBCD and all of the work that we've done here as a board and as a district, it's exciting. So what a great place to be, and I wouldn't want to be anywhere else. So thanks to all of you for helping me share that joy, because it's just wonderful. It validates what we all do every day for our students, so thank you.
And I'm just going to say ditto, since this has been a long meeting, so.
All right. We're down to public comments, and I think, Mr. Taylor, you wanted to comment this evening, is that correct?
That's correct.
In doing so, each person addressing the board will give his name. Each person is allotted three minutes, so you'll be given that three-minute timeframe as well. We will give you a 30-second warning. During the public participation, each member of the public should direct their comments to the board as a whole. Consent it with our policy is not a time to question the individual, the board member, or the district employees. As a reminder, our expectation tonight is that everyone conduct themselves civilly and respectfully, and will not tolerate profanity, frivolous, repetitive, or harassing statements. So, Mr. Taylor, you have three minutes.
Thank you for your time this evening. It's been an interesting year. One thing I've done this year is I've been reading a lot of books, more books than I've ever read in my entire life. I read a book called The Real Anthony Fauci, which shocked me. I read a book called Fallout, which kind of shocked me. I read a book called The Bodies of Others by Naomi Wolf. That one was kind of shocking, but she is an incredible writer. She writes in such a way where she just pulls you into a discussion, you can actually see her pictures. And currently, I'm reading the book Hillbilly Elegy, and I'm so touched by this book called The Bodies of Others, I want to give the board a copy of it to read. What she actually says, if you read the front cover, it says, "The Bodies of Others is about how we came to a harrowing civilizational crossroads, which we find ourselves engage in a war against vast interpersonal forces with limitless powers over our lives and which threaten the freedom we have always taken for granted. In our most provocative book yet, Dr. Naomi Wolf shows how these forces of Big Tech and Big Pharma and the CCP, other all-enough forces have seized upon two years of COVID-19 panic and sinister new ways not only to undermine our republic, but also fundamentally reorient human relationships. Their target is humanity itself, their end goal is to ensure that our pre-March 2020 world is gone forever, irreversibly gone, to be replaced with a world in which all human endeavors, all human joy, all human fellowship, all human advancement, all human culture, and all human song, all human drama and worship, all surprise and filtrations, our celebration is behind a digital paywall, a world in which we have to ask our technology permission to be humans." And some of the takeaways from this book that I was, that I really didn't know, but did you know that most Americans don't know what totalitarianism looks like? I know when I was in Washington in 2021, I saw an awful lot of Chinese individuals, and I asked them, "Why are you here?" And they said, "Because we know what totalitarian is, we see it coming to the United States, and we want it stopped." And that's one of our problems, we don't know what evil looks like, because we've gotten so used to our lives having certain freedoms, that the response to the pandemic seemed to be so well orchestrated, so well planned, that some people call it a plandemic. And if you read that book, The Real Anthony Fauci, there's a whole section about how that actually was planned. Machine learning now controls what we're able to share on social media. Tech companies grew by $2.9 trillion. IQ scores for people born during the plandemic plummeted 20 points. We already talked about how important that is. Rent freezes caused, and shutdowns caused transfers of up 15% of our real estate to U.S. single-family homes to corporations. And the 10 richest men in the world increased their wealth during the pandemic, while the poor and the middle class lost ground. And don't think schools aren't part of those targets. And if you mind me, just kind of close for a little longer, if you don't mind. But, you know, one thing is that, some of the things like equity, we talk about equity a lot, that word also means equal outcomes. And in fact, a lot of our laws in California, they're decriminalizing crimes over equity. And we just need to be aware that there are dark forces that are coming after us and our children, and that's why I want to give you that book. I appreciate your service. I love this school system. When I see other things going on in other school systems, I don't see them much here. And I just want to thank you for your leadership and being on this board. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mr. Taylor. I do not have any other green sheets for this evening, therefore, we will make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting, and I have 19:42 or 7:42. So may I have a motion?
I move to adjourn.
Motion by Mrs. Niece.
Second.
Second by Mr. Daffler. May I have a roll call?
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Niece?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?